Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 19th, 7:00 PM. Thank you so much for everyone who is joining us, both in the audience here and on Zoom as well. Just so you know, there's going to be a little bit of a change in the order of our agenda. Usually, we have public comment toward the beginning. Here, we move public comment toward after the budget presentation by Superintendent Burke, so everybody can see what's going on before taking the opportunity to ask any additional questions or make any comments. So that particular portion has been moved toward after the presentation. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who attended last week's meeting, both on Zoom and we had a pretty full house over at the Board of Education building. That was really great to see. People were really engaged, involved, thoughtful. We had an opportunity to really have a little bit of a conversation and dialogue, and I really appreciated that very much. It was great. It was great to hear people's insights and perspectives as well. So thank you for that. I do want to wish a happy belated birthday to Superintendent Burke. Her birthday was yesterday.
Happy Birthday.
She didn't want me to say anything, so I told her, "I won't make anyone sing." So that's the trade-off.
I can really stretch out my presentation.
All right, if that happens, that's my fault. I'm sorry. My bad.
Just kidding. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And while I did not have an opportunity to go see Lily Blonde this past weekend due to some family things I had going on, I know we did have some board members who did attend, and that it was really fantastic from what I heard. So I don't know if anybody wanted to comment on that real quick?
It was really great. It was so fun. The students did a fantastic job. The musicians did a great job. A lot of our Grammy music teachers were the musicians for the play, which was so fun to see. The set, the lights.
Katie and I were just commenting on that. Yeah, the set was so well done and just everything about it. The microphones from the GEF worked perfectly.
Great times.
Excellent. So thank you for everyone who attended and for the group that put together a fantastic presentation again. I wish I could have made it. Okay. Student representative report. Sophia is not with us this evening, so we've got Katie.
Yep. And one more comment about Lily Blonde. Like, everybody kind of summed it up, but I believe that Saturday night broke the attendance record for all the musicals.
It was fantastic.
It was packed on Saturday. It was a very fun event. Today during advisory, the seniors attended a spring voter registration held by Mr. Scudder and the History Department, as well as voter registration in the town. And there was the Jonathan Club held a leprechaun trot during advisory to raise money for CCMC. Tomorrow, there will be a blood drive in the community gym as partnered with Red Cross. The Spring Fling will be held on Friday in the community gym from 6:00 to 9:00. That is planned by student government. Quarter three, thankfully, closes March 24th, and then quarter four will start really quickly, March 25th. Next Wednesday will be the SAT day for the juniors, so seniors get to come in late. And then next Friday will be Empty Bowls on the 28th in the cafeteria from 5:00 to 8:00. This will be a fundraiser for the Grammy and Heartland Food Bank, so everybody make sure to come out and support if you can. Spring sports have not officially started yet, just captains' practices this week, I believe. But sorry, next week will be practices and scrimmages and games. Everything will start. Baseball has their first scrimmage at Hall on Tuesday, April 1st, and their first game will be at SMSA, April 3rd, which is a Thursday. Softball, their first scrimmage will be Friday, March 28th, at home. Their first game is Monday, April 7th, at home. Boys lacrosse has their first scrimmage, March 28th, at home, and their first game at home, Saturday, April 5th. Girls lacrosse's first scrimmage is Thursday, March 27th, at home, and their first game is Saturday, April 5th, in Rocky Hill. Girls and boys track will have their first meet April 8th at East Windsor. Golf will have their first match April 3rd, which is at Copper Hill, which is our home location. Boys tennis will have the first scrimmage Thursday, March 27th, at home. Their first game will be Saturday, April 5th, at home. And then girls tennis, first scrimmage is Wednesday, April 2nd, at Simsbury, and their first game will be Saturday, April 5th, at Thomason.
Thank you.
So yes, spring sports are about to get well underway and start.
It sounds like we're going to be hearing a lot of scores at the committee's meeting. All right. Thank you so much, Katie. Reports and discussion. Director of Finance and Operations report, Nikki.
Okay. Before you is the February 2025 Budget Expense Report for this fiscal year encompassing transactions through February 28th. As a whole, both personnel and program account expenditures remain stable and are anticipated to be covered within the appropriated budget. Please note the available balance associated with technology, support services, personnel is due to the anticipated receipt of ARPA grant funds from the town to offset shared service expenditures. Additionally, financial closing schedules and timelines have been provided to all budget owners defining program and payroll account deadlines. Special education expenses continue to fluctuate as the year progresses, with encumbrances continually being modified to account for student movement, program modifications, and staff adjustments. Special education remains in good standing, but we must continue to monitor potential shifts. The Q&amp;D fund continues to remain consistent, and we fully expect to end the year with a positive balance. Reimbursement revenue to the town is anticipated to increase by 183,730. This is due to the additional $40 million investment by the state of Connecticut for expenses incurred by school districts for FY '25 school year. Per estimates calculated by the School and State Finance Project, this additional investment increases the original FY '25 state reimbursement rate from 62.1% to 75.8%. With that said, the final amount to be received is not yet confirmed, as the final installments typically received in May are calculated from a second filing of reported expenditures by all districts in March. The town has received the first installment of 507,206, which is 75% of the first calculation by way of expenditures provided in December '24. The second March filing determines the final balance to be distributed, which takes into consideration all other district expenditure filings. The anticipated amount of 705,546 is a high-level calculation conducted internally at the 75.8% reimbursement rate. As always, we will continue to monitor this closely and provide additional information as it becomes available.
Any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Definitely a lot of information.
A lot of information.
Donna, did the...
Yes, I would like to say that the Finance Committee reviewed this statement of accounts and approved it at our meeting this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments in regard to the budget?
It's pretty exciting that we're getting extra money back from the state, that special ed funding is...
Fingers crossed.
I know. Hopefully, right? We'll believe it when it hits the account. But nice to see that they're investing in special education.
Right now, it's projected. The hope is that it comes to fruition.
Correct.
I'm not going to vote again.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Grammy Board of Education approve the February 2025 Budget Expense Report.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next we have the first reading of revised policy 4112.5/4212.5. Security check, fingerprinting, criminal justice information. Assistant Superintendent Parsons?
Sure. So at the last Curriculum Subcommittee meeting, the committee reviewed this and decided to move it forward to the full board for the first reading. It will come back up for a second reading and then hopefully a movement to approve. And the reason that this policy is coming before you is it addresses the obligation we have and the responsibility to ensure thorough background checks, both on the staff's part of disclosure, our part on checking references, and then following up with the official fingerprinting background check and check with DCF. This is a language cleanup based on legislation that really, it was very specific in the past about who needed to go through this process. It really now just says everybody who's working in our district or volunteering, coming in on a regular basis, needs to go through this process. There are extensive regulations that are not attached here that really talk about also how we store, file, and dispose of records, because that is confidential and sensitive information.
And Jen, just as a point of reference, all of this is currently in place and has been in place. It's just some language changes on the part of the state. I know you've stated that, but I just want to echo the fact that everyone that works in our schools or volunteers currently goes through a rigorous background check.
Correct. So we've had this process, these processes in place for a long time, even before they were officially required. It's just making sure our policy language matches our practice and the legislation.
Thanks. If anybody, does anybody have any questions about this right now? I would recommend that the board go ahead and take a look at it, and we'll have it for the second reading and approval at the next meeting. Moving along to business requiring action. First up, do I have a motion in regard to the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 Board of Education meeting?
I move that the Grammy Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 Board of Education meeting.
For last meeting, everybody wasn't so excited to make motions. And now today, they're ready to go. Do I have a second?
A second.
There's another motion pending. Is there any discussion in regard to the motion pending? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. All right, motion number two in regard to the March 12th, 2025 Board of Education Budget Workshop.
I move that the Grammy Board of Education approve the minutes from the March 12th, 2025 Board of Education Budget Workshop.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, Karen got it.
We need like buzzers.
Right.
Everyone had their coffee today.
There is no room in the budget for that.
That could be fun.
Is there any discussion in regard to the March 12th? Motion. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion carries. We have one abstention. That's right. Thank you, Ellie. All right, moving along to the FY '26 continuation of our budget discussion.
Thank you.
Superintendent Burke?
Yeah, thank you. If we could bring up the PowerPoint, please. I do have a brief presentation, not nearly as many slides as last week. We did the heavy lift last week, answering a variety of questions from the Board of Education. So if there's curiosity on the part of anyone watching from home or here tonight, all of those slides are posted on our website, because I'm not going to go back and review. I'm just going to give a high-level overview of here. This is where we are currently, with the goal of moving forward tonight for the board to discuss, vote, and hopefully adopt to move the budget to the next phase, which is the Board of Finance meeting this coming Monday, March 24th, for consideration of both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectman municipal budget. So tonight's goal is to answer a few remaining questions from the boards, review the capital request. We've not yet had the opportunity in this process to talk about our capital improvement plan, which is very robust and a very big part of the fiscal responsibilities of the district and the town. I want to talk a bit with the board about the need to keep our eyes open to adding back another FTE. As I've shared over the last month, month and a half, we are watching those kindergarten numbers very, very closely. And you know that we did have two other positions that, at this point, were not fully in the budget, and that's the tech ed position at the high school and the certified reading teacher position. This is just an opportunity for us to dialogue how the district may need to go about doing that if those kindergarten numbers continue to rise in particular. You know, the budget sometimes comes before, always comes before, all the pieces of the puzzle are in place. That's just an information slide. But overall, our goal is to remain at the 3.41% increase over last year, which was discussed at our last meeting together. So you might recall this fancy little graphic, which really identifies shifts in our funding, accessing all three sources of funding in order to make a reality, both the school resource officer position, which is new to the school district, as well as maintaining some real critical positions, such as the library media specialist, which we talked at length about last week. Just as a reminder, we have three sources of, you know, funding in the district. The Q&amp;D fund, which is grant funding, allowed us to free up $120,000 that was earmarked for lease payments for technology, and we moved that over to small capital, and that made room for the SRO salary. In addition to finding a funding source for it, we also, in conversations with the Chief of Police, realized that it's not realistic to think that this person would be on the ground in July. But our fiscal budget starts July 1st, so we do salaries that way. Just by thinking that this individual may not start until September 1st or thereabouts, we were able to reduce the salary, so there's no harm there, but it's a more realistic look at what those dollars may be. And then you see the small capital, which is an allocation from the town that allows us to do our capital improvements, also had some slight shifts. And then ultimately, both of those two funds were able to help us with the general fund, and the general fund is what we're talking about most of the time when we think about our operational increases. And so although the percentage did raise slightly, there's no impact to the taxpayers. This has the same impact because we're using those other funding sources, which are often grant-funded. And you can see here that this would be the FY '26 Board-approved spending, where we have $39,418,142 in that operating budget. That represents a 3.41% over FY '25. And then the other two funds are listed, Q&amp;D at just under $1 million and Small Cap at $1 million flat. You may recall that we did reduce the fund, the capital fund, in order to make room in the operating budget. And that was how we were able to go slightly above the 325 without any impact to our taxpayers, which is important to all of us. We're going to quickly talk about some of the questions. There's only a few that were remaining from last week that I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to. So Nikki, I'm going to just start with you with the first few questions.
Sure. One of the questions is, what is the status of Grammy's Health Insurance Fund, and is the balance in a good place? The short answer is yes, it's in a good place. The town and the Board of Ed are on the same plan, and this is budgeted, is it budgeted in concert with the town. Additionally, when our benefits consultant, Lockton, reviewed the health rates and our claims experience in the fall of '24, as well as in January and March of '25, the town and Board of Ed expenditures were in good standing. Health insurance allocation rates increased 2.9%, which is very good, considering many of the neighboring towns and districts are seeing double-digit increases in the coming year.
And last year, we saw those double digits.
We did.
And this year, with our experience and our rates, we're looking much better.
Right. Our claims experience is doing really well.
We caught a little bit of a break on this.
This year, we did.
Yes. So some of that old claims experience that was high is now kind of falling off our trend, but being replaced with the new low.
Thank you. And then we had a couple of questions about the federal funding impact, and Nikki's going to speak to those as well.
The question, if federal funding is lost in FY '26, what is the total impact to Grammy Public Schools? And what is the Board of Ed's strategy to manage the possible loss of federal grants? The district's projected revenue for federal grants for FY '26 is approximately $627,000. And you can actually find this on page 18 of the budget book, where it's actually broken down per grant. Right now, the Board of Ed does not currently have a strategy to offset these reductions. It would be drastic if that were to happen, but at this point in time, like all other towns and districts, we just have to wait and see, and we'll keep a close eye on it.
Can I speak for a moment just on this? Just that, I think I've mentioned before in other meetings, that this is something that we're paying attention to. It's something that people in districts throughout the entire state and the country, but I'm not in those meetings, across the entire state are paying attention to. No one really has an identified strategy at this time. It's going to be a lot of wait and see, and it's going to be a lot of what can our state do to help compensate for any of these losses, if possible, and if that's the way we have to go. So wait and see is really the strategy here. But there are, Superintendent Burke attends meetings with superintendents throughout the state. I attend meetings with board chairs throughout the state, and we do discuss these issues.
Okay, the next question is, what is the total amount for personnel paid for by grant funding? Again, this information can be found on page 19 of the budget book. But for example, in the superintendent's proposed book, there are 12.3 FTEs in the certified teacher section that are funded by a variety of grants, and that includes the IDEA, Title I, Title II, ARPA. And in the instructional support section, there are 6.4 FTEs currently paid with grant funding. So there is a total of 18.7 FTEs planned to be funded via grant monies in FY '26.
Another question that came this week was, you know, what's the impact of postponing that technology purchase? We discussed last week that we would take the $174,000 in the small capital budget and decide to postpone the purchasing of district and faculty, staff laptops. You know, so John Lambert, our Director of Technology, shared these bullet points with me here. Essentially, teachers will be operating older laptops. We know that that may increase the level of repairs or possibly individual replacements. We do have a repair budget. We did not increase that budget, but we're confident that we will be able to use these older devices successfully. And then the devices will need to be replaced the following year. That will then, of course, push out the entire replacement cycle. That makes sense. We're not going to suddenly, next year, be able to do all the district laptops and all the iPads if that were the case. I see this as an opportunity. My leadership team sees this as an opportunity. The board has been committed to better understanding the impact of screen time for our children. We know that during COVID, there was funding coming in for devices, and it was essential that every child had an individual device. We're proud of that one-to-one device structure that we have, and I think it's serving our students and staff well. And it's always a good time to say, is it still serving us well? What is our current philosophy? And what is the projection from a fiscal perspective of maintaining at the same level? Or is it time to perhaps propose a new strategy? So I appreciate a little gift of time. We have the best tech team around. They're very confident they'll be able to repair and keep everybody in working order. And then we will come to the board next year with a revised approach in moving forward with technology, both use and purchase. We were asked for a list of the roles that are paid for out of a particular line. The 5110 line includes salaries for the 11 administrators in our school district, and they're listed there. And now on to some new information, which is really around capital funding. We've had really robust conversations at the board level around capital improvements, deferred maintenance, daily needs for repairs and upkeep of our buildings and grounds. I'd say the only team that rivals the tech team is the facilities and maintenance crew. They're hardworking, and no job is too large, or too small. They will come when we need them. And so this funding allows us the resources to do those jobs that are needed to keep our buildings and grounds in good repair. It's usually just slightly over $1 million, and this year, as we've discussed, it's a flat million. So these are the revised numbers from the superintendent's original proposed book that you have. Transportation and equipment at 117,431. Building and maintenance projects, which our director, Chris DeGray, will speak with you in a moment about. And then technology, which we've already discussed. And I'm going to just break them out for you here. Essentially, we're not purchasing anything new at this moment. Certainly, a truck could be in need of repair for a number of reasons or replacement, but we do not have any planned purchases in the coming year related to transportation and equipment. This is really well detailed on page 32 of the budget book. You can see our bus fleet, the ages, the miles, all of that. The $117,000, just over that, is for lease payments. It's debt that we owe on our current transportation and equipment. The next section is technology, which we have already spoken about in great detail. You can see on page 33 of the budget book. It will be revised slightly, because as I've now said a couple of times, we're removing the 174K. We're adding in $120,000 for our existing lease payments. This was previously being paid out of that Q&amp;D grant, but we felt that that the appropriate place for the SRO salary. And then you'll see some expenditures for repairs and emergency replacement. But again, there's nothing new here. It's all about existing equipment and then needs for like displays for classrooms and smaller scale. You know, when we talk about technology, it's not only those devices, it's also the infrastructure that makes all of that happen. Software is in the operating budget, not in the capital. So I'm going to invite our Director of Facilities, Chris DeGray, to come on up to the podium to speak with you for a little bit this evening. Really, the remainder of our presentation is to better understand capital before we move forward for discussion and vote. And so, Chris, thank you for joining us this evening, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I want to be informative, but brief, some of the things we've spoken about. I've gone on in much larger scale in past meetings, want to give you an overview, so everyone has a clear understanding of these two mandates. Two separate mandates. Mandate number one has always been in place where we have to have yearly indoor air quality testing. Now, when you think that, you think, well, that's kind of hand-in-hand with the HVAC. The indoor air quality testing requirements is actually broken up into six categories and metrics. Building and grounds maintenance checklist, waste management checklist, ventilation checklist, which crosses over what some of the HVAC will speak about, walk-through inspections of the interior of the buildings, as well as exteriors, integrated pest management checklist, and food service checklist. In total, and in a few meetings ago, I gave you folks a copy of some of the lists and checklists. I went through it, and the whole list for each school is about 250 metrics that have to be done. So it's 1,000 metrics total for the whole school. This has to be done yearly. The good news is, in going through these HVAC assessment webinars we've been going through with the state, and I'll get to in a moment, and having conversations and sidebar conversations and asking, say, you know, I want to make sure when we bring in these people, because I think that we had a lot of sticker shock when I first came to you and said, just to do the HVAC assessment and no work is $163,000 from the high school. What does that get us? That gets three guys walking around with some meters for a couple of days. So I asked them the question, is this providing an opportunity for some type of collusion or price gouging? Because all these firms know, and they've been very clear in their webinars, the spirit and intent is to, one, make sure that our kids are safe, but, two, look for ways that we can improve, not come in and tell us how we have to re-engineer our HVAC for all of our buildings. So in further conversations with that, I said, well, with the air quality, you know, it was a little less. We've been finding on average about $7,000 to $8,000 for the air quality, these checklists. And I was asking them about some of the metrics for that, the qualifications. And it turns out, I'm actually qualified to perform all of these. When I was at Westfield State University, I spent the first several years as the Director of Environmental Services. Among many OSHA certifications, I was also certified for IICRC, which is the Institute of Inspection, Restoration, and Cleaning Certification. And if you have enough aggregate qualifications, you can handle them in-house. We still, we don't change any of the metrics. They still go on the website. We still make them available to the public. We timestamp and date when we do all of these. So we are going to aggressively look to do this over the course of the summer with myself and my staff. This will be an annual savings of $30,000, because we can now do the indoor air quality testing in-house. So that's kind of where we're at with that. With the HVAC assessment, a brief overview of the mandate is, over the next five years, every school in every district has to have their HVAC system assessed in two forms. You have these engineers that know how to write up the reports, and you have the technicians that know how to go and do the work, kind of find a needed way to marry it all. So what they do is, you hire a firm, they bring in the HVAC people, they take a couple of days, they... of days, they go through the area. They provide a whole assessment, they put it on the state portal, they put it on our website, make everything clear to everyone. We put together a list of recommendations, and they said a lot of time it's going to be filters, dampers, and adjusting some levels, not wholesale, you know, it's costing all this money, and then we're going to have to spend X amount more. And certainly, there will be costs incurred. However, in researching this, we have found a lot of companies who are now coming forward that are far, far, far less than the initial quotes that we gave you, some more than half of what we originally gave you. So we're taking a cautious approach to this. We're doing two things. Number one, we want to finish this webinar series because the last two coming up cover the legal aspects, and if there's going to be grants, reimbursements. And then the other portion is, is we're seeking additional quotes. And instead of just getting two, three, we're reaching out to industry peers, and we're finding much more reasonable numbers so that we can be fiscally responsible, but still candid, which we're going to be doing over the course. They require 20% of the school system a year, so that puts us on track to do one school a year. And I think we're going to talk about de-order, maybe elementary schools, and look at our high school, middle school, and we'll get to all that. But we're going to do it with common sense and make sure that we're doing it in a way that we're keeping the kids safe, we're keeping staff and visitors safe, and we're meeting all the requirements and mandates.
Thank you, Krist. And so this number is as close as we can get to an estimate currently, but we're still entertaining those different quotes coming in. And Mr. Gray is underselling his qualifications. I mean, he has spent countless hours on these webinars, and then he's researching and reading, and then going back. And I think, in fact, you told me that they're using some of the metrics that you shared as for Granby as a model district to help them better understand the impact that this mandate is having on small districts to try to afford it. So he has gone all the way to the top to the people that created this statute in the first place. So we're really beneficial benefiting from Krist's expertise, and I want to just publicly thank you for the time you've been putting into this.
One of the main companies putting on the webinars, Fosse &amp; O'Neil. I just finished a $4 million project with them at my prior job. So I had all those connections. I was at their office yesterday, and we're going to get it on the right track, and we're going to get this taken care of.
Yeah.
We are very grateful you decided to apply in Granby.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We've hired very well. Okay, Krist, the next slide, we've talked about a bit already. Whoops, that is not this, that is this. Thank you.
Yes, and I'll just give a brief overview again. We're looking to lessen our carbon footprint to be energy efficient, and we are looking to remove the oil tanks compared to propane at Kelly and Wells. Again, that was another item. We had sticker shock, so, you know, procurement laws in Massachusetts are far different than Connecticut. So Nikki Stevenson has been a great partner for me. She's reached out to a lot of peers in the industry, and we're looking at samples of RFPs and how we can go about this responsible because because it's twofold. Yes, we're taking out tanks, but we're also putting in propane above ground, we're putting fencing, we're pouring concrete, and then we have to convert the systems within, which are a couple of different components. And it's just a lot of cost related to labor, heavy machinery and things like that. So when we go out, we're going to make sure that we're fiscally responsible for that, as well as our buttress wall and some of our of those, see, Wells Road, we've got falling apart at the seams on the outsides, but we are working tirelessly at that and also looking what figures we can put together to make sure we make these repairs and get the school back up to the standards that Granby puts forth every day.
Thank you, Krist. And that moves us into the larger capital. So the board is familiar, and you've heard CPAC, right, which is newly newly formed. We have two representatives here. And so this is new for us this year, although there's certainly a history of this committee here in Granby. And so these are the three priorities that our district has moved forward, along with a long list of other items. But I asked Krist to spend a little bit of time so that you could better understand the needs behind each of these priorities.
So I think I'm going to spend the bulk of my time explaining the field turf and track issues we're encountering because it appears, just looking at past reports and a geotechnical report from 2022, you folks have been dealing with this for a couple of years. So at the very least, I want everyone to walk away with a clear understanding of where we're at and where we are going forward. So those who have been on the track have seen sinkhole wave marks, we've got depressions and things like that. And speaking with Nikki, Sherry, my facility staff, you guys have put some money into it in the past couple of years. I was able to dig up a geotechnical report from Haley and Aldrich that the installer hired to come out in 2022. And what they did was they made six bore sites. What they did is probably about, the height of this wall, about 15 feet, 10, 15 feet, they'll take a hole sleeve, and they will just drill into the ground, and they'll actually remove that hole sleeve so they have a sample at all the different levels so they can see what's in there. Whenever you have a sinkhole, it's going to be because there's constant water on the ground, causing it to kind of almost like form like mudslides underground, or you have cavities created by air gaps settlements. So in looking at this, I really took a deep dive into the report, and it's 60, 70 pages long. I'm not going to bore you with that. I figure a little bit of show and tell would be a little bit better. I'm going to show the board, and I'm going to leave them here for the public to take a look at. So first, what we have here is what a regular turf field, this, imagine that this represents 15 feet from top to bottom. You see all the way, perfect compaction, perfect layers. The gray part is right below the turf track, and that's what a turf field should look like. This next one is a little smaller, but it's representative of about the size of the bore site. What was found, and I'm going to leave these for anybody who would like to look at them instead of boring you with the report, is I made a matrix from ground level all the way down to 15 feet of everything that was found, everything from wet, poorly graded sand to silty sand, five-inch sections of wood. Without knowing the history of the land, it seems like at the very least that there were probably most likely stumps at some point that were buried in the area that can take 10 to 30 years, depending on the moisture content and the type of tree, to degrade. And once they do, chunk this big becomes this big, that air pocket falls down. We don't think about it. If we have a full football field of 22 players weighing 200 pounds each and a couple referees, that's 5,000 pounds constantly moving around. We don't think about that because of the size of it. But all the way down to 15 feet, we are finding all types of deposit, even sections of bricks, which may have been a landfill at some point. So the issue we're really dealing with here is improper impact. So what we actually have here in Granby is, this is what.
It looks like, yeah.
It looks like 15 feet down, uneven all the way down. You can even see. We have, we have no evenness. So that's the good. The bad news, good news is challenge always prevents, shows opportunity. We actually have arranged for the company that installed the turf field to come out here from New Jersey. They were generous enough to come up with a full team this coming Tuesday to do some inspections and talk about some recommendations. More than likely, at some point, when it comes to remediation, we're going to have to look at taking and digging down 10, 12, 15 feet and just onsite, rescreening that soil and compacting it properly in layers with proper layers all the way. So it's not like we're taking it out, trucking it back in. I think the challenge is going to be if this is our, if this is our track, and this is kind of the general area where we board the holes, are they there and there and there? Are we going to put in a new track field and have it years down the road? So we're going to just possibility of starting at point A and kind of fanning out until we don't come into anymore if we do keep going. And they're going to give us some recommendations. Now, we have professionals. I'm going to get use out of them. I'm going to have them walk our roller field. I'm going to have them look at our baseball field. We're going to look at possible future uses of turf in other areas and take the opportunity since these gentlemen are driving three, four hours, and they're going to spend a whole afternoon with us. And I know to do this, it's going to be a big project down the road. We're going to be probably before tearing up the field. Let's look at the pictures, press box, lights. Those are decisions for other people to make. I don't write the checks for those things, but we facilitate it. But when I do things, I want to do it the first time and do it right. So at least I want to have the whole information on all of our athletic fields, which we're in the middle of putting together. And again, there are sheets there if anyone wants an idea of what they're looking. Nothing, what they found was any type of contaminants, no dumping of any chemicals, oils, things like that. They're all organic materials that are just degrading over time, and hopefully, we'll have some solutions for that. Next, we want to talk about Granby Memorial Middle School. It's a very old building. There's a lot of old parts of it. There's a lot of MEPs, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. What do we fix when? What's our starting point? What's our baseline? We don't really know. Everybody's probably got a favorite thing they want to fix them. I spend monthly walkthroughs with Heather. We need a baseline. So in my background, what we've done at a higher education level is we perform facilities conditions assessment. So I've gone ahead and with the blessings of Nikki and Sherry, I've gone and I've been engaging in companies since the week that I started here. I finalized a contract with the company, Terricon, and we've scheduled for them to come out during the April vacation. They're going to send an entire team, and they're going to spend a day or two walking through everything, top to bottom, the types of floors, the carpet, the paint, if we're meeting ADA in our bathrooms, our ceiling tiles, everything to do with the buildings, the RTUs on everything, our fire panels. What they're going to do is they're going to prepare a report for us. They hope to have it in about a month or so after they come to do their walkthrough. And it's going to kind of give us a baseline of, here's what's out of code, here's what's going to be out of code, here's if you fix everything to now, three, five, seven, 10 years down the road. So we at least have a baseline, and we can see this is what it's going to cost to fix things now, and that will organically start conversations of what route the district wants to take as far as repairs, what do you want to put into, options for new schools, things like that. This report will really be a good starting baseline to at least start those conversations. And we expect a very extensive report. This company has a very good reputation in the industry, and we're looking forward to getting that and being able to finally move forward on these. Finally, safety and security district wide. This is something that's near and dear to me. I was the executive director of facilities, capital planning, and all of public safety at my prior job. I oversaw security 24/7. So certainly, it's something we're always looking at. There are a lot of initiatives going on. We had Kerma, our insurance company, come through and do walkthroughs, and we've had some reports. We're looking through recommendations there. More importantly, Granby PD was nice enough to lend out some of their folks to do a walkthrough with us. We have some parents in the district who work for Homeland Security. They did walkthroughs with us and said, let's look at some reasonable upgrades, you know, how do you eat an elephant? Bite at a time. Certainly, everything you're going to do, we might say we want to do card readers for certain doors, not others. It can sometimes be like wiring up a house as you frame it and then putting up the sheet rock, realizing you want to wire up other stuff. We want to be intentional in how we do things. And we continue to just look at that and move forward, attend security updates meeting, MEMA, FEMA, Connecticut's versions of MEMA. And I recently became an Alice certified instructor. There's certainly things across the board from safety and security that it's just one of those things you rarely go a day without rest. You're always at least looking to move forward on talking to vendors. I know we've had people come in and speak in the past about different security systems, and of course, it may have benefited them. So we want to, we want to take a broad look at what makes sense and what's going to, again, be fiscally responsible for our district.
Thank you, Krist.
Thank you.
It's a lot of information. Questions?
Any questions for Krist for this portion?
I'm curious about the materials that were found under the track and if that is a failure in construction or it just seems very sloppy.
So I guess if there were no prior reports, if there was no EPA reports, if they, you know, they probably tested the soil for contaminants, but when you, if you take a look at this, if you go down to kind of the first three inches, it's well-graded sand gravel. So it seems like to a degree they did their job by, you know, not having been here for it. Once you get to four inches down, it's clay, wet wood, disturbed, poorly graded sand, silty sand, wet fragments at nine feet, specks of brick at 10 feet down, there's five-inch sections of wood. So that's not the norm. Usually, you would have site surveys and things like that, so I can't speak of or been able to look at reports that I saw otherwise that would have been in the contract. Luckily, it's nothing that triggers EPA coming in and shutting down fields like that. Certainly, it's the best of a worst-case scenario. But even when you get down into, one would only go 10 feet, and it just hit bedrock. Sometimes there's bedrock, sometimes there's water running through. And then a lot of it's just poorly graded sand and gravel. So again, the solution at the end of the day, pull it out, some of it, all of it, that's to be determined down the road, and just compact it right before you're going to go spend however much turf fields are these days, and then, you know, you're safe going forward.
Related to that, I'm curious, looking at those samples that you brought in for us, that's very helpful. If there is so much, you know, organic material, wood, specks of brick, as you said, do you envision that they may have to just kind of dig out, remove the turf and like dig out and replace it? Or can they compact what is currently there?
So what they would do is they would screen it. They would have these large machines, and they would kind of just keep dumping the dirt into it. And I mean, they're finite, like they're half inch by half inch, and they would more than likely rescreen it. I don't see, just from these seven sites, I don't see any reason where there's any contaminants that can't be, that can't be sifted out that they would do onsite. If they had to bring in anything, it would be probably fresh topsoil for that top two inches or so, which is an industry standard. But it appears to me, and I'm not the professional, and it's certainly going to be one of my first questions when the group comes out on Tuesday from New Jersey, but they, since they installed the field, have gotten into a secondary business where they actually do this type of work, and they can do the extraction, and they can take it out and rescreen. And they said most of the time, they were able to do it onsite. And this is known, we're under contract with, they're just coming out, they're not charging us, it's just to give us a second set of eyes so we can kind of prepare whatever we need, whether it's bond, RFP, things like that, and such that we can be fully informed on what's going on.
And is that screening of materials, I'm not quite done here, screening of materials goes 15 feet down?
So that's a discussion. We have, we have, it really, it really, the worst of it gets to 10 feet, and then there's just some poorly graded sand and things. But when you, when you've gone down 10 feet, you're compacted pretty good. When you're compacting it, any air pockets that are in that 10 to 15, you're actually going to compact those down. So anything that's kind of decomposed, you're just going to crush that down. Think of, I do it all the time, trash is full, not ready to empty it, kind of just give it that push down or put the foot in to get that extra bag in, you're compacting it down. So and if they need to do more boring test sites on the other side of the track, certainly we can engage that because I'm all about doing it right the first time.
But if there's stumps, they have to come out, right?
Well, at this point, they're particles, they decompose. Average stumps can take 10 years to decompose and turn really almost into sawdust. Some other trees, oaks, and things like that can take up to 20 years. But certainly, they would find that. If they're finding whole sections of trees and stumps, they're going to keep digging, obviously.
Okay, let me get to Dave, because Dave keeps on the other.
So let me see if I, if I understand right, we're talking about digging down 10, 15 feet for the entire football field and track?
Not necessarily. I think, I think the scope might be to start where they board. So again, here's, there's the high school, and here's the track. They did it basically in this area where the sinkholes were, they did it in the radius of there. So they might start digging there and say, okay, let's do this area in another five feet, see if we find everything. There might not be a need to. At the same time, they might dig some additional bores. They say, let's check there and not dig 50 feet all the way across. It's costing an extra million dollars of just digging and screening dirt that wasn't necessary. They said the norm is usually to start where the problem is and give a radius and see if you encounter anything.
And you have that team coming out this coming Tuesday.
Definitely, they're coming out on Tuesday.
We're going to be asking many of these same questions to the team.
Yep. Yeah, we already have a list of like 35 questions. And I met with Carl Gates today, and he has, he's going to be joining us as well.
And he has 35 more questions like that.
I might add two or three more. So number one, I love the presentation. Thank you for doing that. The earth science geek in me just loves this. So kind of picking back off of Dave's question, and this might sound like a stupid question, but where are we bored, right? If they go back in there, and let's just say they do the compression, is that going to shift something somewhere else where there isn't a sinkhole? So for example, like here's a sinkhole, and it's perfectly fine over here. And then we go down over here, we compress over here, does this thing shift this way? The second question to that is, and it's again, probably a stupid question, if we're only going down 15 feet, do we need to or can we? Or what's, we know what's below that, right? Like, what if we go down 15 feet, and then we compress and fix that, and then we realize, oh, there was something else from 16 to 20 feet, and now we're shorter? We remediate it from 15 feet up, but then we have a problem 16 to 20?
Right. So really, from the 10 to 15, and certainly, I'll give you this, from the 10 to 15, there was only one red area where it said poorly graded wet sand, brick, three inch block of wood. And that just happened to be in that area. You're talking that this, this was taken up two, three, four inches and compacted. You're going down 10 feet, it's almost like pouring concrete. You're compacting 10 feet of soil. It's going to push down anything within a radius. And again, I'll leave a lot of that to the professionals. I've had some experience at Westfield State and BCC, not to this level, but I'm familiar with the installation and how far they go down. But they would compact, wait a couple of days, compact, they would keep doing surveys and making sure there's no changes in the levels. They'd be driving heavy machinery over it and really.
Because the air pockets are what really causes the issue is my takeaway from some of our earlier conversations.
Yeah, the crevices.
I was very focused on there's rocks in there, there's trees in there, what is this? But you had explained that it's really about the air pockets that are created.
Yes.
And then there's room to sink. So it's the compacting is just as important, if not more important than getting that.
Right.
My untechnical way of understanding.
A lot of like the 5.6 to 10 foot area says wet, poorly graded sand, not by us, just mother nature. So that's actually, if water's getting through there, that's going to all be compacted, that's going to all be dry. Now you don't have that five to 10 foot section that's kind of milky, sandy, but that's all going to be compacted proper soil.
And that's kind of what, what I guess my question is, that air pocket or that silky sand, right now it's in a spot where it's not sinking and we're perfectly fine. Mediate one section and then it.
Well, and that's what we've been doing. We've been just repairing. We've just been trying to remediate. This year and last year, we did not attempt to do that because it wasn't working. And so the first couple of days on the job, I said to Chris, I need you to figure out a plan for the middle school and I got you to, you got to solve the turf. I don't know what's going on here. And so he's been hyper focused on this. Because this is a budget discussion, I don't want to get too far into the weeds. We can invite Mr. DeGray back anytime. He's always in the audience. He has a wealth of knowledge. And so if there isn't any more sort of global questions, I'm going to save the technicals. He'll, he'll just take us, we'll be here for much longer. You'll all wish that you sang happy birthday. It's going to take a while. So thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I would say the last best example I could give is if anybody's had an above-ground pool and after 10, 12 years you see it start to tilt, like it's time to get a new pool, but it's obviously still, I'm going to go down like a foot or two and I'm just going to compact all that dirt and soil and everything. And then it's fine for the next 30 years. It's a smaller version of that. It's taking what was there already that just wasn't the greatest soil, putting new soil. If it's all silky sandy, they will bring in new soil, compact it all down and.
But it, but it is possible that this is just the first place that's showing it's worked.
Yeah, there's, there's a possibility.
If they use the same lousy fill for the entire field, we could have a really big problem here.
Sure. And that's why we're going to be careful and intentional and that won't happen on my watch.
Thanks, Chris.
Think, think positive, Dave, think positive.
But that's, that is the exact reason why you're not putting a shovel in the ground until we have.
One last question.
All right. I'm going to 38. Like sonar or something? Is there some kind of sonar or something you can?
Oh, you talked about that earlier.
All right, now we're good, go.
Not exactly the answer, right, Chris? I was like, can't we just get out there with like some mag? Can we get Casey Petrucci's entire environment science talk out there? I see you back there, Casey. Casey has so many questions, she's going to invite Chris to her class, I can talk. All right, moving on. I wanted to present to the board a potential problem and solution. Really, this is not about asking for more money. This is not about an attempt to adjust the percentage. It's a practical challenge that I wanted to present to the board because I think that it's important to be as transparent as we can with the process of the budget. As you know, the initial proposal from the superintendent's budget perspective was to not fill, you know, three FTEs due to retirement. We have been hard at work, long, long hours with lots of really smart people around the table to try to figure out how we could find some additional funds to support the important critical roles of the district, one being the addition of the new school resource officer and one being maintaining or keeping that FTE for library media. We've successfully done that and we don't need to talk about that more. I think everyone has a solid understanding. The budget will move forward and hopefully be accepted by the taxpayers on April 21st. Here, the reality is things are still moving straight on through July 1st and beyond. And so one thing that I told you we're keeping a really careful eye on is the kindergarten numbers. Parents will be registering their children for kindergarten over the next few months and some even over the summer. And so after this budget is adopted, I will continue to need to work with my team to look at those enrollment numbers so that we have appropriate class size and we all would agree that kindergarten is that first important year. So guidance from the Board of Education would be followed in order to keep our class size at that appropriate level. So if after the budget is determined, I need to add a teacher, how will I go about doing that? That's what this slide is about. We have a commitment to maintaining the tech ed program. We have a commitment to making sure that the students at the high school are able to have a robust offering of electives that include all of the really great courses that are offered through the tech ed program and others. And so we're looking carefully, you know that we had already included in the budget a .4 FTE. So we said we're not replacing the tech ed teacher, but we said we're not going to be able to do that at 100%. We're going to keep a .4 in order to grow some folks. This is language that's not common to most people, but we think of a 1.0 FTE as a one full-time educator, one person who works full-time. We have other staff that might be a .8. So they're, they're working 80% of the time, right? They might leave a little early or work three days a week or however it works out. That's something we can do at the high school level by the nature of the building, that kids have different courses. So we already assumed in our budget the .4, and I had identified it as art, although we shared with you, it could be math, it could be business, it could be from other areas. We discovered as well that I have a teacher who is engaged in sabbatical and is coming back in the fall. And that individual was budgeted at a 1.0, but in fact, they will be working a .8. So that's a win. I have a .2, a little sliver of someone's salary. So now we're at a .6. So that leaves a .4 of a full-time position in salary to try to find. And that's approximately $18,000, but of course, there's a lot of factors. Who is this person? Where are they on the salary grid? How many years' experience do they have? Are they taking benefits or not? You know, so none of this is an exact science. So Nikki and I and my leadership team have been looking at possibilities to find that $18,000. These are not sure things, but these are proposals that we have at this time. We, we have a very small dollar amount, I think it's $12,000 to $15,000 in a mental health grant that is specifically for the summer. We run an extended school year program, we call it ESY. We have a number of mental health professionals that work ESY. Right now, their salary is paid for out of the operating budget, out of the salary line. Nikki identified that we may be able to squeeze about $6,000 or so to move a little bit out of the operating budget to put it into a grant. There's a theme here, right? We use our grants to help offset operating costs so that we can do the most for our students. We just hired, just this week, she started a brand new speech and language pathologist. And that is a really coveted position. They're very hard to find. It's a very in-demand position. And when we don't have a speech and language pathologist on staff, we need to do what's called contracted services. The board has heard that term before. So we've budgeted for the contracted service rate because we didn't have someone on staff at the time of developing the budget. And we think that there will be a little bit of a savings there as well. That $12,000 is a placeholder. But what I wanted to demonstrate to you is after the budget is approved, the work continues. We will keep looking at every single line to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our kids. I heard Dave Pelling and other members say, we really value that hands-on engaging learning for our kids. I know that my own children really thrive in those environments and we heard that. And we really do have a commitment to make sure. And so maybe I'm going to need a .4, a .2 at the high school and maybe I won't need that kindergarten teacher. Or maybe we won't need either and we'll get a part-time reading intervention teacher. Do you know what I mean? We're always looking to maximize those dollars to be student-facing. And I just thought it important to share this with the board and with the community because we have really difficult conversations. But the reality is nothing's ever completely off the table because this is a, this is an evolving process. We have students in the process of being identified for perhaps some special services. We're going to need to provide those services next year, whether we budgeted for them or not. We may have someone retire, we may have someone resign. There's, this budget ebbs and flows. I just thought it was a part we don't talk about a lot. And so I'm not asking you to decide anything here, but I just wanted you to be aware that we will continue working on this even after the budget is all wrapped up with a pretty So this is, so this is where we are. I shared this at the start of the slide. This is our suggestion to you this evening for the operating budget at an increase of 3.41% over last year. I'm happy to answer any remaining questions that you may have. And the next step is for the board to discuss and vote. And then we have our meeting on Monday with the Board of Finance, where both the town and Board of Ed budgets will be heard. The public hearing is on April 7th at 7:00 PM at the high school. And then the townwide referendum, where we invite really everyone to engage in the process and get out and vote, is from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on April 21st.
So I'm going to start with the board here to ask questions. And then what I'm going to do before we vote is I am going to open up public comment. We do have members from the Board of Finance joining us again tonight. Thank you very much. And so I'm going to allow them to ask their questions first before proceeding to the rest of public comment. So I'm going to open it up to our board here. Does anyone have, oh, Karen's got something.
I have a question, yes. I know it doesn't really affect this year's budget a lot, but when we were talking about transportation costs, I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we leased our buses. We do, right? We don't own the school buses?
We own our buses.
We own our buses?
Oh, we do, okay.
We pay for the services to the company that comes in and they provide the drivers and they maintain the buses, but we actually own the buses.
Oh, we do, okay.
And that, and we're, that's another opportunity to review current practice and the Finance Committee of the Board of Ed is looking at that very carefully to make recommendations going forward.
Yes, we've been considering whether or not that is the best way to move forward.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the Board of Ed have any questions or comments?
No, I just want to reiterate what I said in the Finance Committee meeting earlier today because you all weren't there. I appreciate all of the effort, hard work that has gone into this budget. It does take a village in doing this and we are a small town that does not have a lot of business in our town. So we don't have a lot of taxes to offset our budget. So it's largely borne by the taxpayers and we are trying to do the best that we can for our students, our teachers, and our taxpayers. And it is a delicate balance. And I know that Sherri has worked very hard along with the other administrators to try and come up with the best budget that she could. And I appreciate the effort that has gone into that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Donna. It has been quite a month.
And I can't say it any more eloquently than Donna did, so all I'm going to say is what she said.
Any additional comments from the Board of Education before I open up public comment? I am going to give my usual spiel.
I just, I appreciate the efforts to continue to consider how to build up the tech program. You know, when I was principal at East Granby, we were one of the first people to put the advanced manufacturing program in place. And I just think it's really important, you know, even nationally, there's been a real big national conversation about maybe every kid doesn't need to go to college, right? We're finally admitting that after maybe going too far down the other road. I think this is an important piece. Thank you for continuing to work on that piece.
All right, I'm going to move on to public comment before we entertain any motion for the budget. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the board. And board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member or to discuss student matters which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. Okay, moving on, I said I would, I would entertain the Board of Financers. We have, we have Kevin, Bill, and Ben here. Do, does anyone have any questions?
I actually don't have the additional questions.
Can you, can you, can you?
You have to go to the podium, sorry. Catherine's just trying to get you to that mic.
I would just, yeah, again, echo, I don't have any additional questions for, for tonight. So we just appreciate all the work that you've done. It's great that, you know, with the, with the focus on the students and certainly the tech program, knowing that that's a need, that you're considering creative, different ways to come up with it. And Nikki, I know you're, you're working hard there and it seems like you're finding new opportunities all the time. So that's always great to see. And certainly kind of challenging some of the H vac numbers was a big saving. So thank you to.
She's not done yet.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Mr. Kennedy here, Mr. Perrin?
All set.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I forgot to add this little preamble. If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please enter your name into the queue. We start with the people who are present in the room first, then we will move over to Zoom, but we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. Is there anyone present who would like to make public comment? And it doesn't have to be just about the budget, just so you know, it says public You're first.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Casey Petrucci. I am a science teacher at Granby Memorial High School for the last 25 years and I am speaking to you tonight as the president of the Granby Education Association. I spoke at this meeting a year ago to express some concerns about the continued pressure to find efficiency. My ninth graders are learning about efficiency now, calculating the ratio of work done to the energy put in. Efficiency can be improved when you reduce your inputs, but only if you can maintain the outcomes. And I fear that will get harder and harder to do. Superintendent Burke proposed an original plus-one budget that was forward-thinking with investments in staffing and programming to meet the needs of our students, staff, and facilities both now and in the future. Unfortunately, the Board of Finance's budget guidance does not support these goals. The Board of Education is now faced with some difficult decisions in order to find those compromises that maintain the integrity of our educational system while balancing the needs of taxpayers. As the president of the Granby Education Association for the past eight years, I have seen this community weather many challenges and make great fiscal gains during difficult economic times. Having negotiated three teachers' contracts with my colleagues, I'm acutely aware of the difficulty Granby faces in funding the ever-rising costs of government services. The choice to invest in public schools comes at the expense of residential taxpayers, as was stated. Unfortunately, we have less confidence in the federal and state grant monies that have helped us tailor our resources to meet our students' needs since the pandemic. At recent meetings, questions have been raised about the functions of various roles in our public schools to better understand what we are paying for and the return on that investment. I would like to shed some light on this on behalf of myself and the nearly 170 members of the Granby Education Association who serve your students in Granby Public Schools. Regular education classroom teachers are often the most visible and the first faces students, parents, and other members of the community seat. We are the ones you may recall from your time as a student or a parent at conferences, open houses, and school events. However, a classroom teacher's job would be impossible without the team of support specialists that round out our staff. As a classroom science teacher at the high school, I have 107 students who arrive at my classroom door in varying states of readiness for learning throughout the day. I need to meet these students where they are and find ways to engage and challenge them. With the help of special education case managers who are certified teachers and paraeducators, both in and outside the classroom, I can differentiate instruction, attend to individual behaviors, and try to instruct and assess all the learners in my room according to the standards of my curriculum. I am a better regular education teacher for all my learners because of their teamwork. With the support of school psychologists, social workers, and guidance counselors, students working through social and emotional challenges, have an adult to help them understand themselves, their needs, and their responsibilities as young people growing up. I also gain more perspective than a student may be able or willing to share with each of their teachers repeatedly. With a library media specialist, I can co-plan opportunities for my students to engage in authentic research and explore the use of new media tools, resources I do not have the time or capacity to keep up with while still planning and executing my own curriculum. Students of all ages also receive programming to foster reading, a skill that is both academic and practical, and one that students engage in less and less on their own. With instructional coaches and interventionists, struggling students have someone who can work with them individually to find the right strategies to improve their performance. Classroom teachers also benefit from the expertise of seasoned veterans who have the background on student data to help shape the best curriculum and assist early-career educators in building their toolkits and developing their talents in the classroom. Specials and elective teachers offer a wide variety of opportunities that allow students to pursue their passions. When reluctant learners find that course or special that lights their fire, attendance improves, motivation is sparked, and helping them push through the more difficult parts of their school day. Simply put, regular education classroom teachers can meet the needs of all students better when the full support team is in place to assist students with specific and varied needs. While it may appear inefficient on the surface to have these positions, the goal is always improved outcomes for all our students, reducing these positions or programs where similarly have a detrimental effect on all our students. I would also like to point out that when students with special needs are mainstreamed in my classroom, and I have appropriate staffing and programming to support them, they make connections with their peers in the community. Not only that, but all the other students learn how to engage with them as well. If this inclusion model, when it's the right choice for the learner, teaches all our students how to engage with each other and be kind to one another, it may not be a tested outcome, but there is no price that isn't worth paying for that. Going forward, investment in our schools is a shared responsibility of the community. If the community wants this investment to pay off, long-term strategic planning will be necessary. The conversation must include both how the school district spends its budgeted allocations and how the town can manage and diversify its revenue sources to support that budget. We in the association will continue to lobby locally for the needs of our students and also at the state level for appropriate funding to help towns manage all the requirements set forth. I know I will be at the state Capitol later in April, and the first words out of my mouth every time I'm down there is excess cost share grants. I understand the immense push and pull, and I know to a certain degree I'm preaching to the choir, as many of you also work in schools and handle these same situations. But I cannot emphasize enough how much the support means to the staff when we see this happen, and I encourage everyone in the community to be involved, attend the meetings, and to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present in the room who would like to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, we'll move along to Zoom. Is there anyone? I see that there is a hand up. Mr. King, if you could unmute? Yeah, I'm going to give him, yeah, it's, I know. While we're waiting for Mr. King, is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to make public Mr. King? I really hate to cut it off. Like, when I know someone wants to talk, I know I should move along, but let me just give him a minute because people walk away.
How could you walk away? Because mine might not be working. It's like moving but not staying on. I don't know if we can solve that.
Okay. Can you type in the chat?
Can you, if you, yeah, Mr. King, can you, are you able to type in the chat your question perhaps? If we're having some technological difficulties? Is there anything appearing in the chat? Okay.
Always email us.
Yeah, I was just about to say that. Please feel free to email us any of your questions. You can find our email addresses on the town website or on the Board of Education website, and we would be happy to address your question or concern then. Last call for anyone on Zoom for public comment? Thank you, and thank you to everyone who's here and participating and taking an interest in what's going on. I really do very much appreciate it. We've had an opportunity to review an amazing amount of information in regard to the budget. It's a complicated year. We don't expect this to be the end of complicated years. I think we know that we have to think of some creative ways going forward to, to serve our constituents in the best way while providing kids with the best possible education we can, which really is of foremost concern and, and, you know, one of the primary reasons I even ran to be on the Board of Education, right? To me, there is no greater gift that a community can give than, than education, but that's my personal opinion, not the board's. But we have an opportunity to review a great deal of information. A lot of maneuvers have been made, great collaboration with the Board of Finance to come to us, what I think is a good balance between serving our, our students' needs and what we're able to do financially at this time. As the Board of Finance has previously shared, it's been a difficult revenue year for them due to some recent legislation, and that's one of the reasons that we're in the situation that we're in. So that being said, do I have a motion in regard to the FY26 Board of Education budget?
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt the FY26 Board of Education budget.
Second. Is there any further discussion in regard to the budget? As presented?
Motion needs to include, I believe, as presented.
The 3.41. Can we rephrase the motion? Can you add, add as presented, please?
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt the FY26 Board of Education budget as presented.
Thank you. Second. Again, I'll ask for discussion. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the dedication and hard work of everyone involved here, everyone who expressed their concerns, who submitted questions. We really appreciate every single email that we received in regard to this. I read every single one, I can assure you, and it is, I feel as, as if right now we've come to the best solution for this moment.
Oh, wait, there's more? There's more on the agenda? Okay.
Very few, thank you.
The next motion will be the one everyone can, their best report. Committee reports, board standing committee reports. The approved curriculum minutes are attached. Finance, personnel, facilities met today.
Yes, we met earlier this evening, and we reviewed the February budget statement of accounts and approved it, and discussed the proposed budget that we were going to be talking about this evening, and that's about all we talked about.
Thank you. Does, does anyone have any questions for Donna? All right, thank you. Other board-related reports, crack cave. I don't think we really have anything going on there. I have my board, board chair meeting next Thursday. Granby Education Foundation.
Yes, we met this week. The planning for the Granby is still underway. I tried to send an email to all of you, but the list, I guess, failed. They are wondering if we would like to help sponsor a team or two for the Granby. If people register before a certain date, they get early bird registration, which is like $100. Otherwise, it's $125. So if anybody would like to go in on that and sponsor a couple of teams as a group, you're welcome to do that, and I don't mind collecting. The GEF has given out a total of $22,000 this year in grant funds to our educators and community agencies, which is fantastic. They are, and an especially giving year because their investments have been doing so well. And then a new grant was approved this week for a lending library for the crew advisory programs at the middle school. So it's a library of games, activities, reusable materials that a group can check out and use together. So Ms. Rice at the middle school went for that, and they're still in the process of collecting teams, auction items, and business sponsors. So that's coming up soon.
Thank you. I think that early registration date's coming up soon, too.
Yeah, I think it's next week.
Okay, all right. We should do that soon.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, calendar events. I just wanted to highlight real quick the Empty Bowls March 28th. I love that event. I think it's, it's really fun, although last year I got a cold soup which really should have been heated, so I'm just saying.
I also heated for me. Some people like cold soup. It's a thing.
I'm not a gazpacho person, but it was advertised as, anyways.
They do such a nice soup.
No, it's really a fantastic event, and I think it's even a...
The bowls are amazing. The bouncy bowl.
It is. And then I also wanted to, Superintendent Burke already mentioned the public budget hearing, and then the townwide budget referendum, which is April 21st. I did want to throw out there, take, take a look at the Screenagers. Growing up in the digital age, an opportunity to evaluate the use of screens in our teenagers. That's 6:00 to 8:00 PM on April 8th, so. Do you have any additional comments? All right. Board member announcements? Action items?
I didn't hear any of this evening.
Thank you.
Making sure the soup is not cold, not an action item?
Heat up Monica's soup.
They heated it for me when I asked. That's all I'm saying.
Poor Katie's taking it personally.
Chicken soup was amazing.
Like it, like it said, served cold, so it was not...
It's a Monica thing, not a, not a, not a...
Gazpacho is cold. I'm just saying. Anyway. Knocking around now. Maybe put a clothes and have a nut go. Vichy swag?
The soup is not an agenda item, so we shouldn't go into detail. Superintendent's report.
I will be brief, and I will not mention soup. I love it. So just first and foremost, thank you to everyone that was engaged in the budget process. It goes without saying that it truly is a team effort with our board, our boards across the town. The central office leadership team works tirelessly with every crazy idea we come up with to possibly look at something differently. Department leaders, all of our union leadership, all of our principals and building-level leadership, this truly doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes a tremendous amount of effort, and I'm proud of the work that we've done. So thank you. Really echo the sentiments with Legally Blonde. Great job, so, so much to celebrate there. The budget edition of the vision will be in homes on April 7th, or prior to the April 7th budget hearing, and that's a really important document to highlight some of the decisions that have been made in the Board of Ed adopted budget. And I just want to mention that Joelle Gilbert and her culinary arts students at Granby Memorial High School served, made handmade breakfast and served it to the Granby men's group. And then this coming week, or two weeks from now, April 2nd, they will be serving breakfast to the women's group, so super exciting.
That's really all I have. Oh, my gosh. We're having a rough night here, folks. Thank you for sticking by us here. Again, before I ask for a motion, thank you to everyone. Superintendent Burke, thank you. Linda Powell, everything that you do in all of this, and Jen Parsons, thank you. Krista Gray, thank you for an amazing presentation. One little anecdote, when he's, I saw this presentation before, he took it and he flipped it over so you could see the air pockets, and the whole thing just like sank down. So just, just take, imagine that, and if you were to flip it, it just collapses entirely.
But don't do that. We need it for Steve.
No, no, it's fantastic. Fantastic. I'm just saying it was a great presentation, so thank you. So I will stop talking now and ask for a motion.
I move that the Granby Board of Education adjourn the Board of Education.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everyone.